I hear nothing.
I hear you Frank.
Can you hear us now Frank?
Yes, I can.
All right.
Good afternoon, everyone.
Hello.
How are you doing?
Terrific, and you?
Good, good. This is Mark Abraham, representative of the Happy's Pizza.
No.
I just couldn't get on, I couldn't get the Zoom to work, so I called the number.
Well, good.
Are we the only two on right now?
No, there's about seven of us on. I think I'm the only one unmuted.
I just remember your voice on the last meeting we had on the savvy sliders down the street.
Oh, yeah. Hello, Mark.
How are you guys doing today, ladies and gentlemen?
Terrific.
Another day, another day in paradise.
Stimek, you're on mute. There you go. Up your volume, too.
I don't know why it's muting me. I don't think I'm muted.
No, I was talking to Chairman Stimek.
Oh, no, but my phone like told me you are muted. I was like, why? I didn't touch nothing, so I unmuted it. Hi Chairman.
Sarah and Mark, I'm going to suggest we do mute everybody so they don't try to talk over each other. That's probably what happened there. So if we want to just let, if one of them knows they're muted, that we have no background noise, no distractions or interference, and when it's their case, we can bring them in and unmute them.
That's perfect.
I think, I think that I did that, and yes, I don't think I unwittingly muted any of the members, but it looks that all of the petitioners and public are muted.
Mark is muted also.
She doesn't like me.
I, I have the ability to unmute myself, as do all the members. It, it appears that we have a quorum present at the meeting. I know Mr. Hunt is going to be late. I didn't see Mr. Logan. Do we, have we heard anything from him?
I did not hear anything. Mr. Chair, Paul, did you hear anything from Bob Logan?
I did not hear, actively, I do think, I thought that he was perhaps going to be absent, but I also thought that um, he was going to communicate whether or not he was coming.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Bob just texted me, he's trying to get on right now.
All right, very good. We'll give him a minute.
Hold on just a second, I think that's Joe.
Love the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
I'd like to make a motion to
Good.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda as submitted.
Second.
Yeah, a motion by Menendez, supported by Farina, to approve the agenda for this evening as printed. Is there any discussion on that motion? Hearing known, all those in favor say aye, or I'm sorry, wait, can't do that, sorry. Ms. Trexler, if you would do a roll call, please.
Certainly. Member Menendez. Here. Member Farina.
Yes.
Member Burley.
Yes.
Member Chmenti.
Yes.
Member Logan.
Yes.
And Chair Stimek.
Yes. The agenda is approved as presented. Ms. Trexler, and I apologize and forgot, the, the other statement regarding the online meetings, would it be appropriate to do that at this time, or should, should we have already done it?
I, I'm looking at Attorney Denault, and he kind of shrugged, so it sounds like it's the chair's choice.
Sure, I think even, even during the formal statement will be fine.
All right, very good. So then we'll carry on with the approval of the minutes of the December 3rd meeting. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
I make the motion to approve the minutes of December 3rd as amended. Sarah, we do, we do have that amendment, correct?
That's right, the version in your packet and also which was emailed out is the corrected version.
Okay, thank you.
All right, I know, member Menendez made the motion. Who made the second, please?
I did, member Logan.
I did, doesn't help, okay. We have a motion by Menendez, second by Logan, to approve the minutes of April, or to me, of December 3rd. Is there any discussion on that motion? And once again, that, that motion is to approve the ones as were emailed out on 4/29/21. If there is no discussion on the motion, Ms. Trexler on the roll call.
Member Menendez. Yes. Member Logan.
Yes.
Member Burley.
Yes.
Member Chmenti.
Yes.
Member Farina.
Yes.
And Chair Stimek.
Yeah. Motion passes, the minutes of December 3rd are approved. All right, Michigan Department of Health and Human Services issued an order on March 19th, 2021, that limits the indoor gatherings at a non-residential venue. And the Michigan Department of Labor and Economic Opportunity has issued emergency rules regarding remote work by employees when feasible. In addition, the city of Frazier has declared a local state of emergency due to the ongoing COVID-19 pandemic. To ensure the, against violating the indoor gathering restrictions and in the interest of achieving the goal expressed in the MDHHS order and the MDLEO rules to protect the public health participating during a local state of emergency, the Frazier zoning Board of Appeals will meet electronically on May 6, 2021, in accordance with the Open Meetings Act, using Zoom for video conferencing and public access. This notice is required to ensure that those wishing to observe and/or participate in the meeting have the opportunity to do so. The public can participate via the Zoom application, internet access via the Zoom website, and/or via telephone using the Zoom telephone number and meeting ID. The public will be able to hear the zoning board of appeals members and will be permitted to speak for up to five minutes during the public participation portions of the agenda. Please note that the callers, viewers will automatically be muted and must remain muted until called upon to speak by the chair. Written comments will be accepted prior to the date and time, no later than 4:30 on the day of the meeting, by the building department at zoning@micityoffrazier.com, which is the method by which the members or the public may contact members of the public body to provide input or ask questions on any business that will become before the public body at the meeting. Public hearing comments will be heard during any public hearing that is conducted during the meeting, and other comments will be heard or reviewed during public participation. In the event of a change in the status of the statewide local states of emergency, the zoning board of appeals meeting may be changed from a remote meeting to a live in-person meeting to be held at Frazier City Hall, 33,000 Garfield Road, Frazier, Michigan, 48026, on the same date and at the same time. The city will post notice of any change in the method, conducting the meeting from a remote meeting to an in-person live meeting, and/or any change in the meeting place for this meeting to the city's website at www.cifrazier.mus. Interested parties should periodically check for such changes or contact the city clerk's office at telephone number 586-293-3100. It's still long, but it seems shorter than the last time I read that. Maybe I'm getting practice, I don't know. Thank you, Paul. And also regarding this evening, petitioners and members of the audience, the zoning board of appeals is herein created as a body of limited powers, where there are practical difficulties or unnecessary hardships in the way of carrying out the strict letter of the Frazier code. The board shall have powers in passing upon appeals to vary or modify any of the provisions of the code relating to the construction, structural changes in equipment, or alteration of buildings or structures so that the spirit of the code shall be observed, public safety secured, and substantial justice done. No variance in the provisions or requirements of the code shall be authorized by the board unless the board finds evidence that all the following facts and conditions exist. First, that there are exceptional or extraordinary circumstances or conditions applying to the property in question or to the intended use of the property that do not apply generally to other properties in the same zoning district. Second, that such a variance is necessary for the preservation and enjoyment of a substantial property right, similar to that, to that possessed by other properties in the same district and in the same vicinity. The possibility of increased financial return shall not of itself be deemed sufficient to warrant a variance. Third, that the authorizing of such a variance will not be of substantial detriment to the adjacent property and will not materially impair the intent and purpose of the Frazier code or the public interest. And finally, that the condition or situation of the specific piece of property or the intended use of the property for which a variance is sought is not of so general or reoccurring in nature as to make reasonably practicable the formulation of general regulation for such condition or situation. As before, this evening, our public hearing items, when an item is called to the floor and public discussion is opened up, the chair will call upon you, I guess, is the raise hand function available to participants, Ms. Trexler?
I believe it is. Paul, do you know whether that's true or not? Since I'm a co-host, I don't know that I can test it out, but
Yeah, you could test it out.
Oh, okay, yeah. Member Hunt is raising his hand, so he's, he's proven that the raised hand is, is functioning.
Thank you very much, and by that action, please note for the record that Mr. Hunt has joined us at this meeting at 7:29.
Thank you.
All right.
Mr. Chairman?
I don't know who's speaking.
Oh, yes, Mark, good on Denault. Just for purposes of the minutes, because we have a member who's just joined, that member should probably indicate their presence and their location.
Thank you, thank you very much for keeping us on the level. Mr. Hunt, if you would please indicate your presence here and tell us the city, state, and county in which you are located. Mr. Hunt, if, oh, now you're unmuted, thank you.
Okay, yeah, sorry, yes, I am present, I am in the city of Frazier, county of McComb, state of Michigan.
Thank you very much. Full board is present for the conducting of business at this time. With all of that out of the way, I'd like to move on on the agenda to the next item of business, which is old business. I'm not aware of any old business coming before us this evening, other than that, I'm thinking of business, nevermind. So unless someone has some item of old business that is before us, I will move on to the next item, which is public hearings. And the first public hearing is appeal number 20-01, variance request of Happy's Pizza for a wall sign. Section 3285-2D of the Frazier zoning ordinance in the CG General Commercial District, to obtain variances from the zoning ordinance standard to exceed the building wall sign global area by approximately 25.3 feet. 57.3 square feet requested, where 32 square feet is allowed, and to exceed the number of allowable wall signs by two, requesting three, a total of three wall signs where one saw, wall sign is permitted. Regarding the property in question at 31896 Grossbeck Highway, is the petitioner or representative present this evening?
I am, sir.
Thank you, thank you very much. You can mute yourself at the moment, and I'll allow Ms. Trexler to give us the background information regarding this request.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Chair Stimek. I'm actually going to delegate this role to Daniel, Danielle Bouchard from my office, who drafted the variance review letters, and she will walk us through the facts.
All right, very good. Mrs. Bouchard?
Thank you. So just to recap, the applicant for variance request 21-01, Happy's Wall Signage, is requesting to obtain essentially two variants from, variances from the zoning ordinance, the first of which being to exceed the allowable wall sign permitted square footage by approximately 57.3 square feet, or I'm sorry, 25.3 square feet, 57.3 was requested, 32 square feet is permitted. And additionally, the applicant is requesting to obtain a variance from the number of wall signs permitted in the CG General Commercial District by three wall signs. One wall sign is permitted, three additional wall signs are requested, so if approved, the applicant will have four wall signs in total. As you can see to the image on the left, on the north side of the building, an additional logo wall sign of approximately 9.8 square feet in size is requested on front of the tenant's space there. As you can see, the cursor is circling the, the logo sign. And on the right image, you can see that the applicant's also requesting an additional logo sign plus a Happy's Pizza sign for a total of 47.5 square feet, so that would be fronting Grossbeck Highway. Thank you. Actually, yeah, you can change the sign, thanks. So just on the aerial image, you could see sign number one, that's the 9.8 square foot logo sign, and then two and three would be that logo sign plus the Happy's Pizza business identification side, sign fronting Grossbeck Highway. Section 32-85S specifies that tenants in this General Commercial District are permitted one wall sign. There's currently one wall sign already in place. Happy's Pizza's requesting total of three additional wall signs, which if approved would be four total. And as for the criteria for evaluation, just a couple things to note there. The subject site is located at the corner of Masonic and Grossbeck Highway. To, to note for context, the Community Business District in the city of Frazier does permit two additional wall signs, just to kind of have that, you know, in your back pocket as we continue this review. The proposed variant sign application with subject site will result in a total of four wall signs. It is not deemed that the, if granted that the variance would have any negative effects on surrounding properties, it could be argued as necessary for the preservation enjoyment
Right now.
property right that is possessed by other properties within the vicinity. However, it should be noted that through an analysis of other general commercial buildings fronting Grossbeck Highway, it has not been identified that other buildings have shown that there are wall signs that exceed the square footage and allowable number. So this would be sort of an outlier in, in that circumstance. The situation could be applicable for other corner lots in the General Commercial Zoning District, however, something to note, though, is that this particular tenant space does, however, it is located at the corner of Masonic and Grossbeck Highway. The, it does face the front parking lot, so, you know, patrons would still be able to pull in and see and identify what building they're, they're going to. And then I think that more or less concludes our review for, or hit the highlights of the review for this application if I wanted to open it up for questions.
Are there any questions for Ms. Bouchard? Ms. Bouchard, the, the analysis that you did looks at the present proposal as being four independent wall signs. Do you know if the two signs on the north and on the west side, if they were looked at, if that sign plus the logo were looked at as a single sign, do you know what the square footage would be? Would you have to count the space in between? Is logo been trimmed down to, you know, immediately around the, the graphic?
So my inkling in this circumstance is that it would be the same, because it would still take up that same area even though there is a space between. And I would venture, Sarah or Paul also, if, if you may have a conflicting interpretation of that, please let me know, but I would be inclined to say that it would be the same square footage.
Paul administers the zoning ordinance in Frazier and was the first person, you know, who took a look at this and found that it exceeded the requirements, so you could probably walk us through your analysis.
Yes, so I think the square footage would be very similar, but the, the definition of sign area does indicate that the blank space in between sign elements is counted as part of that, so there would be a sliver of square footage, I think that would be added if you consider that two signs. The, the applicant applied for it and approved the text for the Happy, Happy's Pizza sign, I think that's what started the consideration that there are two signs on each side, because the Happy's Pizza has been permitted. I'm not certain if it's been installed yet.
It has not.
So I, I guess I'm just, and, and we end up with this, potentially, we end up with the same signage on the same building in the same location, but I guess, you know, is it better to have consideration of a, of two wall signs totaling, to throw out a number, 90 square feet, as opposed to allowing four wall signs totaling 85 square feet?
If I may respond, I actually, you know, given that the zoning board of appeals is meant to consider the, the least variance required for the practical difficulty or hardship that you're finding, I, I do actually think that you could support Chairman Stimek's, at least implied argument that the lesser variance would be to consider the logo plus the word on both sides as one wall sign, and therefore the variance would be for one additional wall sign plus the square footage, if I'm understanding kind of that thought process. I think probably, in the way that the applicant presented the information as separate signage, as, as Paul noted before, since Happy's Pizza, the text on the north side was previously permitted and, you know, granted approval, the additional requests were sort of considered separate signs, and the way that the, they're applied for here, you know, kind of implies that there are different sign structures, probably kind of separately installed, rather than all having the same background or foundation, and forgive me for, you know, not knowing the technical term, but, you know, the sign base itself looks like it would be kind of four independent pieces. So whether that is relevant or not, I guess, to considering whether there are two signs or four signs, I'm, I'm not too certain.
All right, thank you for your comment. Is there any other questions for the administration from the board members?
I have
I have one. What is the hardship? I don't see it listed on the application.
Mr. Freina, is that a question for the administration or for the applicant?
Well, the administration accepted the application, so you could go either way, I guess.
So, you know, I don't think in our analysis that we necessarily found something that could be elevated to that level and that we were, you know, willing to put forth in terms of suggested findings, if you will, by the zoning board of appeals. But the applicant did make application, which is of course why we, you know, went through the motions to schedule the public hearing and have the appeal heard by you.
Any other questions for the administration? Hearing none, at this point in time, I will open up the public hearing. This is appeal, or excuse me, I take that back. I'm out of practice. Is there anything that the petitioner wishes to add to the administration's presentation of the request or to his or her application?
Yes, sir. I do.
If you would, please just give us your name so we could have that for the record.
Mark Abraham.
Go ahead, Mr. Abraham.
Thank you, folks. Thanks again. This is my second time in front of you guys and you guys are great people. The only thing we had a problem with at the Savvy Sliders, and I hope they're doing a good job for your city, from what I understand they are, is the cars are moving so fast down Grossback. Without that wall sign there at least giving us a shot to let them know that we're there, they're already way past the line, way past us to turn around to give these new folks a half a chance to succeed in this tough market that we're in right now. And you guys are saying four signs, but I've done 150 of their stores. And our logo, our Happy's Pizza Ribs Chicken Seafood is a tagline on a raceway. And we've always considered them one sign. You can consider them two, if they need to be connected to make them seem like one, that won't be an issue as well. But it would help that franchisee a great deal if somebody was to realize that he's there when they're doing 55 miles an hour down Grossback. And it's a shame to say that, that I do almost every day going back and forth there to give them at least a decent chance of somebody stopping and trying to spend money at a new location in their city.
If I may ask a question of the applicant really quickly.
Yes.
Mr. Abraham, have you guys received any permissions or approvals from the person who owns the tenant building?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am, we have.
So they are on board with the sign facing Grossback Highway on the?
Yes, yes, ma'am. They're nice landlords. They just want their center full and nice and we're building a beautiful place, just like Savvy Sliders, I hope.
Thank you.
Are there other questions for the petitioner?
I'm on mute.
Mr. Logan, are you looking to speak or am I just getting a lot of background?
Not me.
If you wouldn't mind muting your computer or phone unless you're going to be speaking, we tend to be having a lot of background. Thank you. Is there any other questions for the petitioner? Since Mr. Freina won't ask, I will. Mr. Abraham, on your application where it says the basis of your appeal, it's blank. Can you tell us why?
My apologies. Something that got missed by my sign company.
Mr. Abraham, do you know if we were to box out or include the area in between the logo and the lettering, do you know what the overall sign area would be?
As far as square footage?
Yes.
I have it on my email. And it would be 32 square feet.
No, Mark, I'm sorry, I have to join in. Hi, it's Jennifer from Global Science.
Hi, Jennifer.
Hi. So the overall sign, it's 47 and a half square feet. They will be both the same exact sizes on the side and on the front. The only reason why I submitted it 32 because the store was getting ready to open and I thought we were going to wait a long time for variance. So I just wanted to get a permit for them to go, you know, to move on with Happy's Pizza without the logo. You know, just to get this permit approved before variance. And then I applied for an extra logo on the side and then a completed sign on the side of the building. That's why you see 32 and then you see 47 and a half.
Sorry, I'm so 47 and a half includes the logo?
Correct, yes.
And the space between the logo and the sign?
The space between, okay, it's it's 10 inches.
By how high?
So that's about another foot and a half.
Well, if I
It's few inches, you know, top and bottom, like the top, it's leveled with Happy's and the bottom, it's like three inches more than Ribs Chicken Seafood. But overall, it's the 33.68 for the height. So you're, we're calculating the logo height, not the sign. Because I'm giving you an overall size.
If I may, as I understand the applicant, the total area of the signage with the logo and the verbiage, including the area in between would be 47.5 square feet. Noting from the drawings provided that the verbiage is 32 square feet and the logo is 9.8, adding those up to 41.8. That would be about 5.7 square feet of space in between that would be included if we were to look at it as a single sign. Does that seem appropriate?
As I said, the logo, it's a little bit, it's, you know, it's a little bit more in the height. So it's more than the
Included the three inches. She included the three inches that the logo is bigger than the sign, so she's kind of short selling us because it's really not that much. It's probably about 45 and a half and not 47 and a half.
No, it's, okay.
All right.
But I have to also try 33.68.
If I may, Chair Steinbeck, I think to counteract what Mr. Abraham just said, if the foot of the yellow circle extends beneath the bottom of the ribs, chicken and seafood, if we're calculating this as one sign, you actually extend the lowest point of the sign eastward. So I think that the sign representative's characterization is more accurate than what Mr. Abraham said.
Yeah, you would, you would put a regular geometric shape around the entire sign and calculate that. So if the, if the logo is taller, that means the overall sign is taller. Height by width gives us presumably 47.5 square feet.
If you zoom in, I'm sorry, if you zoom in on my plan that I submitted, you can see the 33.68. It's on where the foot is, so it's not where the ribs, chicken seafood is. So you see 206 for the width by 33.68.
Okay, so you did calculate it the proper way, okay.
Yeah.
All right. Any other questions for the petitioner? Hearing no other questions, at this time I will open up the public hearing. This is appeal number 20-01 regarding the property at an address which I will have in a second. 31896 Grossback Highway. Is there anyone in the public that wishes to be heard regarding this request?
Mr. Chairman, seeing no raised hands.
Thank you for that. I forgot I've got to do that. Once again, this is appeal number 20-01. Is there anyone in the public that wishes to be heard? Mr. Rexler, have we received any written correspondence in response to the public hearing notice?
I will defer to Mr. Erbil.
Mr. Chair, we have not.
Thank you very much. Hearing no one wish to be heard from the public, I will close the public hearing and bring it back up to the board. Is there a motion? Anyone on the board wish to make a motion?
If you make a motion, can we make a motion for two signs instead of four signs?
I believe, that certainly would be within your power. It's a lesser variance and was requested.
Can I ask the applicant if they had a problem if we did it that way?
You certainly can ask them that, yes.
What is the total square footage going to be, 47 and a half then?
Yes.
Thank you.
That's what, that's what I don't know what, if it gets approved, but that's what it would be.
If I may, I believe that it would still require more than 47 and a half since only 32 square feet is allowed. So if both of the signs are 47 and a half, that equals 95. In which case, the 32 would be subtracted.
Mr. Freina hasn't made his motion yet, but I believe his intent was to make a motion to approve two wall signs, each one being 47.5 square feet.
So then I believe the variance total square footage would be 63 feet and an additional variance for one additional sign.
Understood. Over and above the ordinance?
Correct.
That would be 63, did you say it was?
Yep, 63 square feet plus
One additional sign.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, Dan Denault here, if I may.
Go ahead, Mr. Denault.
Just a question for Sarah, Paul or Danielle. As advertised, this variance did not go that far, correct?
I'm sorry, they did not go
In terms of square footage, they didn't go as far as a variance beyond 57.3 total square feet. Is that, am I right about that or am I missing?
That's, you're right. That's correct because we weren't counting the in-between area.
So if we were at all interested in entertaining a motion that allowed 47 and a half on each side of the building to put us at whatever the math was, 90 something, that would exceed what was advertised and we would have to postpone.
I'm sorry, can I add? This is me again, Jennifer. Okay, the, the space in between the happy guy and the Happy's Pizza sign, it's combined together and that's what you look at, the 206. So this is all one sign. So I'm not calculating Happy's Pizza by itself and the happy guy by itself. This is all one sign. So the 206 is the width of Happy's Pizza, you know, chicken, I'm sorry, Ribs Chicken Seafood and the logo. So you have 47 and a half and 47 and a half. Okay, this is 95 and then you allow 32. But the extra 63, it's between the sign, the whole sign on the side of the building and the logo. But again, this is all one sign. The only reason why I separated them is because I wanted to get the permit approved the first, you know, the first place with 32 square feet. And then I was told to put the logo there, I'd have to either shrink the size of the sign that I have or apply for a variance. Which is, you know, that's what I did.
But if we were to take a rectangle that was 33.68 inches high and 206 inches long
Yeah.
and place that around the message on the building, that would be a sign area of 48 square feet.
Yeah, but if the logo, you know, the extra three, four inches on the bottom, if making it leveled with the rest of the sign, it shouldn't be a problem. You know, I can just level it right now and give you the exact number for it.
So the 33.68 inches shown on your plan is not the height of the logo?
It is the height of the logo.
And that dimension times 206 inches wide is 48.18 square feet?
206 by 33.86. Correct, yes, it's 48.
So if it was looked at as a single sign, it would be a 48 square foot sign?
Correct, yes.
If I can, member Menendez, has your hand raised?
It goes back to, it goes back to what Mr. Denault said. I agree. If we even count them as two signs, it would be a total of 64.36. We advertised 57.3. I think this helped happened in a previous variance that we had and we had to come back, renotice and redo it to those dimensions because we can go under and approve it. Correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Denault, but we cannot go over.
That was health mark.
Correct, correct.
In effect, we've got a two-part variance request. We have one for the number of signs and we have one for the area of signs. By combining the visual messages on each side of the building together, we would actually be reducing the number of signs below what was advertised, but we would be potentially approving a request that was a greater square footage than was advertised.
I agree. Member Burley also has his hand raised.
Yeah, I got a question to the petitioner. As Frank said earlier, what is his basis for request? I do not see a hardship for that space, that property, other than any other for that space, that property, other than any other property in that strip mall.
Is that by turn?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry. The hardship for us would be that we're a brand new business and a Dollar General and those guys have probably been there twenty five years and everyone knows exactly where to go to. We're opening up fresh during COVID. At fifty five miles an hour, if you're driving by and unless you're coming the other way, you're never even gonna know we exist in that shopping center.
Well, it's.
That was the whole purpose of it.
Mister Abraham, are you asking for a temporary approval?
Um no, no, I don't think temporary would be the right thing to do for for us.
Then the argument that you're brand new there, if it's gonna be there forever, doesn't really have much validity. If you're there as long as the twenty year businesses beside you, then your argument that you're new and therefore need additional signage doesn't seem to have much validity.
Understood. What about if we took one of the logo guys off the side, the gross backside? Just completely off and just put Happy's Pizza Ribs Chicken Seafood. Would that solve all this? Take the space between the logo guy, the logo guy and everything else off.
That might eliminate the problem with the um square footage, but I would have to uh get another number that I don't think I have um. Or maybe I did.
Yeah, that would be thirty six and a half if we remove that logo. But you you'll get thirty two point six for the height and one sixty one point four for the width.
Is that different than the the document that was submitted, the application that says it's a hundred and fifty two by thirty point five?
Because right now he's asking if we can get this logo removed from the site to get this variance approved for us. So if I got it removed, then yes, you don't have this new plan. That's why I'm giving you the size for it.
Um, if I may, I have a quick question for the uh city attorneys present. Um if if we were to or if the applicant were to remove the logo um from the request, would they be required to submit a new application and we would have to submit? Um, you know, a new public notice and everything?
No, not at all. Uh, applicants can withdraw or modify what they're asking the board for at a at a public meeting like this. Uh, as long as they aren't changing it in a way that increases the variance being requested, um, it can certainly be modified, scaled back, uh, they can offer a different plan, a different way. Um, in in my experience, a lot of times applicants come in asking for the move and then they start scaling back when they realize they asked for the move. So uh, that's that's pretty common and and certainly okay for them to do. Um, but the question, of course, still remains for us tonight. No matter what scaling back they do, are they exceeding what was advertised? And if they are, uh, we would need to postpone it anyway. So they might as well submit new documentation if if it gets postponed uh for the board to consider.
Thank you.
A question for the applicant. Um, this the verbiage signage, the Happy's Pizza with the the bubbles underneath. Is it, was it intended to be the same size as the signage on the north side of the building?
Correct, yes. Can we, can we work with what we proposed? Like, I mean, what do you suggest us to do? Uh, do you want me to make the size smaller to reach that fifty seven point something that you were talking about in the beginning? Is a problem because I'm sixty three square feet over the size?
Well, right, right now we don't have a motion on the floor, so so I don't know what to tell you. However, my observation based on the numbers is that if we box out the entire sign as proposed on the north side of the building, it would be forty eight square feet. And if the sign on the west side of the building eliminated the logo, it would be thirty two square feet. That would be a total of two signs totaling eighty square feet, which is um fifty eight square feet over, no. Forty eight square feet over, so we would be within our advertisement. Perfect.
May I ask a question?
Sure, wait, to me.
This is low, this is member Logan. I don't know if you can see me or not. What is the two forty seven inches on the north side of the building? You have two oh six point one seven inches. Yeah, what does that mean?
Two forty seven, it's the frontage. This is the width of the store.
The width of the building.
Okay, thank you.
Two hundred and forty feet.
Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome.
So we're back to the point of looking for a motion.
I'd make a motion, but I don't, I'm a little lost as to what what it would be at this point.
So, can I speak, sir?
No, not at this time. You're not allowed to make a motion.
Not at all. Um can, give me just a second. With the new, with the new, what we just talked about, what would the facade on the north side be?
Based on the numbers provided, forty eight square feet.
Okay, and the numbers on the side would be forty eight square feet. And the other one?
West side would be thirty two square feet.
It's total of ninety and square feet and we're thirty two is allowed, is that correct?
Eighty, yeah.
Thirty two and forty eight is eighty.
Well, there you go. That's why I have a calculator, so that's so that would be a variance of forty eight square feet, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Then I would like to approve, move to approve the variance of appeal number twenty dash oh ones for Happy's Pizza Wall thirty eight ninety six Grossbeck Highway to limiting the signage on the north side to forty eight square feet and on the west side to thirty eight square feet, which is a variance.
Thirty two.
A variance of forty eight square feet. Um, and the hardship is that the the location of the building is such that the traffic uh going by if they try to read what a smaller sign would not be able to do so, it may um create a public safety hazard. And that's my motion.
Mr. Chairman, it's done and all. Before we even get to a second, I think I have to interject and just indicate that that would exceed what would advertise, I believe. So we wouldn't be able to move on that tonight, and even if we wanted to.
Okay, I thought that's why we're.
Mister Mister Denault, I thought what the the proposal is to increase the number of signs up to two and to increase the allowable area by forty eight square feet. It's my understanding that the advertisement was to allow to increase the number of signs to four and to allow fifty three square feet.
Right, but not fifty seven point three extra square feet. It was twenty five point three would be the variance, the extra over the thirty two that's allowed. That's how I'm reading, getting it at least. Yeah, if you look at the agenda and the staff report, uh, it just indicates uh to exceed the building wall sign allowable area by approximately twenty five point three square feet. So that's how it, the math was calculated for tonight. Uh, but if Mister Farina's motion were to be acted upon, and it 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 can't be, but if it were to be, uh, the number would be, I believe we calculated eighty total square feet, which would exceed the thirty two that's allowed uh by forty eight square feet, and that's well in excess of the twenty five point three that was advertised.
Yeah, you're you're absolutely, well, we don't have a second yet, but you you're you're correct. I thought the fifty three was in addition to the thirty two square foot allowed. I apologize for my misunderstanding.
Hopefully that helps.
Anyway, we have a, we have a motion on the floor. Uh, is there a second?
No. I move to expunge my motion.
We don't need to be that formal, Mister Farina. If you wish to withdraw, it just indicates the chair that you'd like to withdraw it.
I'd like to withdraw that motion.
Can I make a motion to table this? Or postpone and give the applicant time to figure, figure this out? Because no matter what we do, it still has to be readvertised.
Yes and no. Keep in mind, you could make a motion that allows them the extra twenty five point three and it would be up to them to design the signage to meet fit within, you know, what you've allowed them. Uh, and they would certainly work with planning and and building and code to make sure that that was done correctly.
Okay, can I, Mark, can I ask the the uh the applicant then if they're?
Hold on, hold on a second. I'm losing it here quickly. So Mister Farina has asked to withdraw his motion. Uh, Ms. Menendez, I don't know, were you asking? Yeah, I think you officially were asking if it would be appropriate to make a motion to postpone and or table, and the answer to that is yes. Uh, but I don't know if you made that such a motion. Can I just clarify that?
Um, I didn't officially make the motion. Usually we ask the applicant if they're okay with postponing it or if they wanna some other option.
All right, very good. Uh, Mister Freena, you had a question for the
Okay, if we go forward with what's what's been advertised, is that fit your need?
Which would be an extra twenty five square feet on the gross backside.
Can me?
No, it would be a total of twenty five extra square feet for the whole tenant space and
That's correct.
And Mister, if 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 it proceeded in that fashion, uh, then you as the applicant and your sign company would have to design signage that moved up to fifty seven point three, but that would be all the signage, both sides, both facades.
Sure, I get it. So basically the other sign on the other north side, I'm sorry, on the gross backside would have to be twenty five square feet total.
If the current one is thirty two, yes, that's correct.
Okay, is there any any way, any way that we can just get the same thirty two? That way it'll just be a little tiny bit bigger?
Not tonight because it wasn't advertised that way.
Okay, so why don't we take what we can get? And we will um take what we can get for now and then hopefully we can do a variance in the future.
No.
I I don't know that as legal counsel, I'd be comfortable with that approach because that would be like saying we're going to put it up as requested or as allowable allowed tonight, but we may come back and ask you to let us expand it and um certainly even if this were to pass with the hardship defined by the board, uh, it would be interesting for the board to have to find another hardship to expand it later. So I don't know if I'd be comfortable with that approach, but I can't foreclose that and certainly uh, you can ask for things in life and um perhaps get them on an agenda. But just keep in mind that that would be a very um awkward staff report to write in terms of.
That was kind of an awkward thing I asked. I'll be honest with you. I'm like, I I almost, I agree with you on that, to be honest with you. I was kind of, that was kind of stupid what I said. Sorry, my fault. I've only done this two hundred times and then started thinking about what I said. I'm like, really? You said that to them?
Thank you, Mister.
All right, well, you know, um twenty five square feet, the sign would have to be, not a rocket scientist, but even if the letters were three by eight, that'd be twenty four. You know what? We're just, uh, I'm gonna agree to it. I'm gonna agree to to having the twenty five square feet and and be content with it.
All right, Mister Chair, then then at this point, the applicant has asked for a twenty five point three square foot increase in his signage at that location. That is the request before the board that was advertised. That is the request that the board should act upon now.
Understood. Is there a motion?
Uh, let's see. Mister Chairman.
Go ahead, Mister Farina.
Uh, I move to approve variance twenty five dash oh one, various request of Happy's Pizza wall signage to for two signs totaling a fifty seven point three square feet where thirty two square feet are allowed. And the hardship was the same as I noted before, that the speed of uh traffic down Grossbeck. If they're trying to um slow down to read a smaller sign, uh, would be uh made public safety issue. I'm sorry, but who's ever got all the background noise, I can't, can't, can't do this. Yeah, please mute.
We have a motion by Farina. Is there a second?
A second.
Mister Too Many, was that you that seconded the motion?
That's correct.
Thank you very much. We have a motion by Farina, second by Too Many to approve appeal twenty dash oh one uh, limiting the sign area to fifty three point seven square feet and I present, and I believe you said limiting them to two signs. Is that correct?
Correct.
There any discussion on the motion?
Whenever I get a second.
Mister Chair, did you say fifty seven point three or fifty three? I thought it was fifty seven point three.
Three, but it was supposed to be fifty seven.
Fifty seven point three. Should be, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
I apologize. I wrote it down wrong in my notes.
And Mister Chairman, uh, Don Denault chiming in just in in the event that there's gonna be any more discussion or or may not be. Um, to be clear, Mister Farina, the motion um is actually to allow a total of fifty seven point three square feet. So really what the motion is is to authorize a variance of an additional twenty five point three square feet for signage and to authorize a second variance to allow for a second business wall sign uh on the west facade. Is that accurate, Mister Farina?
That is very accurate, Mister Denault. Thank you for that clarification and I'd like that put into the motion.
Very good. That that would help the minutes on the record, I think. Thank you.
All right, is there any further discussion on the motion?
I think Joe has to agree to that second first.
Yes.
Hearing no further discussion on the motion, uh, Miss Traxor, if you would do the roll call.
Member Farina.
Yes.
Member Trementy.
Yes.
Member Burley.
No.
Um, a member Hunt, I just realized um is no longer present in the in the meeting. Um, so I think at some point during this um this agenda item, he he must have um left, which leads us to member Logan.
Yes.
And member Menendez?
Yes.
And Chair Steinach.
Yes. That motion carries, uh, request is approved as noted. Uh, moving on to the next item on the agenda, appeal number twenty dash oh two regarding the property. Excuse me, how to find my agenda again. Regarding the property at three, three, seven, three, three Grossback Highway, um, requesting a variance of section thirty two dash eighty five dash two E of the Fraser zoning ordinance, uh, as it applies to wall signs in the IC district to obtain a variance from the zoning ordinance standard to exceed the building wall signage allowable by approximately twenty eight square feet, requesting sixty square feet, uh, where thirty two square feet is allowed. Is petitioner present?
Can you hear us? Hello?
Hello? It's Mark figuring out. Can you hear us?
Mr. Ray, are you, uh, representing this item?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Uh, Ms. Trexler or, uh, is Ms. Bouchard gonna handle this one as well?
That's right. Thank you.
Um, so for, uh, appeal twenty one dash oh two, um, applicant Best Tires is proposing to mount a sixty square foot wall sign on the east facade of their tenant space running gross spec. Um, if you wouldn't mind changing the slide so the group can see, thank you. Um, the total amount requested, um, is approximately sixty square feet as it is located in the IC industrial controlled district. Um, but the zoning ordinance notes that the sign code standards, um, for that district apply to the office of neighborhood commercial. This as well. Um, so section thirty two dash eighty five dash two point B notes that a total of thirty two square feet is permitted for a wall sign located on a tenant space, um, within, um, the officer neighborhood commercial districts, but of course that applies to the, um, IC district. Um, therefore Best Tires is requesting a variance of twenty eight square feet. Um, just for, uh, the administrative facts, um, and kind of going over the, uh, criteria for, um, discussion and, um, approval or denial, um, it is not seen that, um, approval for this variance would have any, um, adverse effects to, um, adjacent properties. Um, prior to this review, though, um, the applicant did mount the non-compliant sign, um, the wall sign onto the building. So they're kind of retroactively, um, applying for the variance for, um, for that wall sign. Um, the subject site is not located on a corner lot and appears to be similarly situated to, um, other properties along the gross spec corridor. Um, other properties surrounding subject sites, um, are enlarged zoned IR, um, or IC, um, a small area of several parcels located on the south corner of Grossback and Kelly, um, are zoned general commercial. Um, the three parcels that are zoned, zoned general commercial, um, across Grossback from the site do not have any wall mounted signage. So there, um, wasn't really too much information to pull off like, um, existing precedents for this site. Uh, the adjoining finished master tenant space includes a wall mounted sign, um, on the building as well. Um, the situation, uh, could be applicable for other corner, um, or for other, uh, industrially, uh, zoned lots, um, within the vicinity. Um, and if approved, um, the wall signage located on the subject site would, would exceed the permitted square footage allotted for tenant spaces by approximately uh, twenty eight square feet. Uh, now I will open up for discussion.
Yes, I, I still have the, the last, the picture. It says I'm viewing Sarah Trexler's screen, but it's, it's not, not the item we're discussing here.
Are you seeing the, the sign, um, building facade or something different?
Says item eight, north facade, additional logo wall sign, west facade, additional sign number two.
Seems like your screen might be frozen, Mr..
This is the, uh, at the mist.
Mr. Farina, would you, do you want to try and log off and log back in? I don't know another, another way for us to be able to update your screen for you.
Though I'll do that. Sorry.
At this time, I'll give him a minute to try and log back in so that we, uh, he doesn't miss out on any of the discussion. Mr. Freina, you're currently muted. Uh, were you, did that solve your screen problem?
There you go. Thank you.
All right, very good. Uh, continue, and we did not conduct any discussion while you were gone. We waited for you.
I was hoping you'd finished it.
Are there any questions for the administration?
Yes, I have one. I don't see an application in my packet. I apologize. I, I, I didn't catch it. Looking through the packet earlier, it appears that I have two copies of the drawing, but I have no application, so I can't view, um, their hardship or practical difficulty.
I will answer this, and if Paul has additional information, he can let me know. Um, I believe that we, um, asked the applicant to, or petitioner to, um, submit the written application. Uh, the city of Fraser accepts all, um, development applications solely through the BSNA online system. And the, um, formal, uh, you know, submittal came through BSNA, and I believe that we never received that written application, but we did, um, kind of receive the formal request through the online system. Um, therefore we thought it was appropriate since the fees had been paid and the, you know, um, online submittal was made to, uh, move forward with this.
Then I have a question, sir, if I may. Within that automated system, is there a spot for a hardship? I don't see it on any of the headings on the application that I see.
No, so, um, as far as I know, we're not really, um, able without a lot of R and D to kind of, um, customize this, uh, platform, which is why we share the, um, PDF applications with anyone applying for a variance, a site plan, a rezoning, and so on and so forth. And we do that so that we can place them in your packets. But we did not receive it in this case.
So if I understand you correctly, what you're saying at this time is that other than, um, doing the online request and paying the fee through the online process, we have not actually received a, a paper or, or, or other application for this request. Is that correct?
Paul, that's still correct.
That's correct, yeah.
I wanted to be a same.
Mr. Denault, do you wanna chime in on that? But?
Uh, all I've heard as far as a thought is the question about whether an application was submitted that included a hardship or practical difficulty. That can certainly be expressed to the board tonight. It's the applicant's obligation to convince the, the board and submit enough evidence of it for the board to believe that the standards have been met. So doesn't need to be in writing. I am looking at the, you know, the PDF version that the planners did provide in the PDF packet, and, uh, they don't include any information as to why they need it. They simply indicate they were requesting a variance for a sixty foot, sixty square foot wall sign, um, as presented. So I think it can move forward with that burden being on the applicant and then the zoning board deciding if it's been met.
Thank you.
Uh, but Mr. Denault, in terms of, uh, procedural, i- i- as terms of submitting a request, that has been, um, verified and substantiated, it's a valid request. We just need additional information potentially that the board will ask about.
Correct. It's a valid request. The planners have vetted it with their report, and now we're here for the, the applicant to make its case.
Very good. Thank you very much.
I have one other question for the administration. The finished masters sign at the other end of the building, how big is that sign?
It's comparably sized to our best tires, comparably sized.
Paul, did you pull that information?
Um, I did not pull the, the, um, exact dimensions, no. Um, I would concur that it is comparably sized.
It's very comparable, yes.
I'm sorry, who is speaking?
Well, my name is Mark. My signs were the company that applied.
We're talking, we're talking to the administration now, so.
I'm sorry.
You'll have a chance.
Um, it is, it is comparably sized and Chairman Farina, I'm sorry, I do not have the exact dimensions. Um, but I would, my estimation is that it is slightly smaller than what is proposed, uh, for best tires.
Here's Steinach. Member Burley has his hand raised.
Oh, literally has his hand raised. Go ahead, Mr. Burley.
How to put the little hand up, so, um, but this is a question for the administration. Um, this picture, um, of the best tire sign, the frontage, um, was that given you by the sign company?
Th- this is the sign company's application, yes.
Okay, and, um, did you guys go out there and look at the actual, um, building? Because I see two other signs on the same building. One is above the garage that says wheel repair and refinishing, and the other one's got their phone number in between the windows.
Um, I, I guess I, I don't have, I, I remember going out to look at the sign, um, some months ago. Um, but I don't have a photograph of, of our own from the administration's perspective.
Okay.
Are there other questions for the administration?
I think member, um, Menendez also has her hand raised.
I thought I put it down. I'm sorry.
Oh, that's good.
Lower hand. I'm good. Thank you.
There are no other questions for the administration. Is there anything that the applicant wishes to add to, uh, his or her application or to the administration's presentation of facts?
Are the hardships very comparable to the, um, the pizza situation? Of course, Grossback Highway has the fifty five speed limit, and that building industrial zone does sit further back off of Grossback. It, it is, and there's trees on the site. It, it's, it kind of needs that type of size of sign really for readability, not to be over the top, and it's such a big sign, because it really isn't. And that is, um, part of the hardship again is that building sitting so far back you, uh, I drove out there to survey the site, and I had a hard time finding it. Then I finally saw the sign, so, and I kind of knew it was in the, you know, tentative area. And we also thought it was very fair that best tires could be comparably sized to finish masters as well.
If I may have the name of the speaker for the record?
Oh, my name is Mark. I signs and designs. Mark.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions for the, uh, applicant?
Yes, why, why are you applying now?
Pardon me?
Why are you applying now?
Why are we applying for the variance?
Yes.
Well, we also had some mis, and we applied for the permit. We thought we had approval. Jennifer from the building department says we had plan approval on the sign. And we were emailed that, so that is why the sign is up, because we thought we had truly city approval on the sign. And then we were quite surprised when we came back and said it was too big. We were like, very surprised. And we thought we had, we had email approval of it. And there was some thought that there was a new inspector there. They got a little confused on the situation, on the approval, and so there was a little bit of some missteps for the city a little bit too. We even got the permit fees. We even sent the permit check for the building permit for the sign and the electrical permit. Of course, they sent this check back after a few weeks saying the sign's big.
Okay, what about the signs on the, that Mr. Burley mentioned on the other, other portion?
Oh, I'm sorry, Mark.
Yes, on the, on the, uh, right above the garage, there's a sign that's gotta be ten by two, maybe, and it says wheel repair and refinishing. And then in between the two windows on the storefront, it says best tires, and it's got the phone number. What about those signs?
Let's see, we. What's that? See, we, we pulled sign permitting, but we, the contract with another sign company, I've got Fadi here, and I'll just speak to Fadi in this.
Hello, my name is Fadi. I'm with Fast Signs in Auburn Hills. The only sign that we did, the best tires, the, uh, wall sign, the other two, I'm, I'm not aware if those were added after.
A question from Mr. Fadi or, or whomever. Um, are those others, uh, first of all, do those other signs exist to your knowledge on the building?
Uh, yes. So the one right above the garage, yes. I, uh, I drove by. Actually, I did the site survey. It does exist, and also the phone number, it's, it, it does exist also. And I can tell that those are not, uh, they're not illuminated. Uh, my guess would be they're either made out of, um, coroplast or, uh, metal sheet. I can tell they're, uh, flat, uh, printed, digital print.
And are those signs intended to remain?
I, I honestly did not get a chance to speak with my client because of the only thing. So I, uh, to be quite honest with you, that's something I haven't, uh, got a chance to, uh, speak with my client in regards to the other signs. Uh, the only thing that I, you know, we're here is, uh, to, uh, discuss the, the wall sign. Good question. I don't have an, uh, I don't have an answer. But, um, if I have to guess, I'll probably say the client wants it, and that's probably the reason why they must have hired someone else to put them up.
All right, thank you. Other questions for the petitioner?
Mr. Chairman, it's Don Denault. If we could just get that gentleman's last name for the minutes.
Last name is Gula. That's spelled G U L L A.
Thank you. There are no other questions for the petitioner. I'll open up a public hearing. This is appeal number two, twenty dash oh two regarding the property of three, three, seven, three, three Grossback Highway. Is there anyone in the public that wishes to be heard regarding this request?
I see no raised hands. Chair Steinach.
Thank you. Uh, have we received any written correspondence from the public hearing notices on this request?
We have not.
Once again, this is appeal twenty dash oh two. Is there anyone in the public that wishes to be heard? Recognizing, recognizing no one to be heard, I'll close the public hearing and bring it back up to the board. Is there a motion to be heard?
I'd like to make a motion to deny it. Variance, my bad.
Variants, my bad. Variants appealed number two-zero dash two-zero. Uh, three-three-seven-three-three Grosseback Highway, best tire. Due to all the extra signs, if you want to call it.
I'll second it.
A motion by Logan, second by Burley, I believe it was.
Yes.
Excuse me. If they, if the. Down those signs.
All right, so we have a motion and a second to deny appeal number twenty dash oh-two. Is there discussion on the motion?
Yes, if the client takes those additional signs down, could there be consideration leave the best tire sign up at that size? If they take those, those other signs down?
Uh, based on the, the current motion on the floor, no. Um, but you may want to think about requesting postponement on the decision to allow you the opportunity to speak with your client about the other signage.
We, I would approve that, yes.
Then. Chair would like to make a motion to postpone action on appeal number twenty dash oh-two to allow the applicant, or to allow the applicant to. Confer with his client on the total signage package that is proposed for the building. A motion by the chair, seconded by Menendez, I heard first, um, to postpone action. Is there further discussion on that motion? A notice to the applicant, I would suggest that you have a discussion with your client regarding the total signage. Uh, because if he does wish to have additional signage on there. Uh, both the number and the square footage would have to be advertised beyond what we currently have. So if that's the case, he can't just come back and say, we would like to keep the other twenty square foot sign. We've got to start all over again.
Yeah, let's understand this.
Is tracks around the motion to postpone?
Here's Stimek.
Yes.
Member Menendez.
Yes.
Member Burley.
Yes.
Member Chmenti.
Yes.
Member Farina.
Yes.
Member Logan.
Yes.
Mr. Stimek, Don Denault here. Is it, I, I probably should have interjected sooner. I was thinking about the, the motion. Uh, is it a motion to postpone to the next regular meeting of the board?
Um, yes, that was to the next regular meeting of the board.
Just wanted to clarify, we usually have a date certain or a next meeting qualifier on those motions. Thank you.
I understand. Thank you. Sorry for my, uh, failure there.
Oh, board, can I ask a question to the board? So can I ask a question to the board?
I, I'm not sure who's asking the question. If you could identify.
This is Mark from my signs.
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
If the client approves the removal of those signs, if we get, you know, written approval, can we then be approved on that best tire sign if they agree to take that signage down, additional signage?
The current, well, I, I can't, it would still require a variance because of the size of the sign. Um, and that would have to come back to the board. Um, and I can't tell you officially what the board, whether the board would approve that size of sign or not.
If I'm a photo, put this in with that?
We have to, uh, for another variance. But, you know, I will. What if we're, uh, you know, we'll be held responsible to remove the additional signs that the client had, uh, hired another company to put up. And just to get an approval on the wall sign that's fifteen feet by four. That we, you know, that's showing, uh, on the screen. Would be, uh, would be get an approval and we'll make sure we'll be, uh, liable to remove all other signage that the client has except this one.
It, can I, can I, I need to ask Don a question. And Don, is that possible for a vendor to speak on? On behalf of an owner that he hasn't conferred with?
If you may allow me, can I make a phone call? Because her main concern was the wall sign.
It was, okay, at this point in time, we have already voted on the motion to postpone the action.
Got it.
You're asking, you're asking if you take the other wall sign off, will we approve the variance that you originally asked for? And I don't have an answer to that question. That is still yet to be debated by the board. But I will observe that the current motion that was made or the previous motion that was made was to deny the request because of the additional signage. Uh, that, that wasn't ultimately voted on, so I can't tell you the results of that.
Okay. That's fair enough. I, I will again, uh, in contact with my client tomorrow and, uh, I'll, uh, discuss with her and I'll make sure that. If she approved that the additional signs would remove, we will go ahead and remove them. And hopefully we can set up another variance and we will, uh, update you with an updated, uh, photo. So you can see that. The additional signs were removed. We'll, uh, I'll do a site survey.
Or, or quite honestly, if in fact your client feels the need that they need those additional signs, then that needs to be the variance request and that square footage needs to be considered.
Got it.
There's two ways of doing it, right?
Yeah.
There's two ways to do it.
Okay. And I'll also explain that one too.
All right, thank you.
And Mr. Chairman, this is Don Denault. As I mentioned, it's the last, for the last applicant, if they have new information, new documents, new anything, they should submit that to planning so that planning can present that for the board, uh, prior to the next meeting.
Correct, and a very good reminder.
And, uh, Mr. Chairman, the last thing I'd mention on this case, then we can move on. Uh, as you noted, um, there is a motion and a second to deny, uh, that motion when we do the agenda for next meeting. That motion should be the first thing that the board considers or withdraws depending on the board's will. So just so we don't lose track of it, it is sitting out there in the ether as a motion that is, uh, before you, uh, to consider.
Understood. The next item on the agenda is variance request twenty dash oh-three regarding the property of three-four-eight-six-one Everline Drive. Appeal of section twenty-eight oh-one oh-seven of the Fraser Traffic and Vehicle Code. Uh, as it applies to the parking of commercial vehicles in residential zoning districts. Section twenty-eight dash one oh-nine provides authority to the zoning board appeals to grant variances under certain circumstances. Is Fisher present regarding this request?
Yes, he is, sir. Good evening, board.
Um, for the record, uh, Mr. DePiero, uh, or I know Mr. DePiero and his family, uh, fairly well. Mr. DePiero used to be my, uh, next door neighbor. Um, however, I have no financial interest in this request, uh, and, um. Uh, there's no, uh, monetary, uh, benefit, uh, depending on the. Uh, outcome of this request, uh, and therefore I'm not going to, um. Uh, step down from the board, uh, for its deliberation. Uh, with that being said, if, uh, the administration could give us a background regarding this request.
Sure, thank you. Um, variance request twenty-one dash oh-three, um, three-four-eight-six-one Everline Drive. Um, the applicant is, um, requesting to park a commercial vehicle in the side yard of their residential home. In an unenclosed structure, as you can see, um, in the image here, um, the, the commercial vehicle is circled in, in red. Um, the applicant received a code violation for parking a commercial vehicle on the side of their residential property facing Everline Drive. Um, section twenty-eight dash one oh-seven B of this, uh, zoning ordinance states, no person shall park or store any commercial vehicle or equipment. On private property in a residential district other than, um, in an enclosed building.
And Danielle, if I may interrupt for one moment there, um, the reference to the zoning ordinance on this slide is, is actually, um, not quite, um, accurate. This is a ordinance that's in the general code of ordinances, which is properly stated in your review letter. So. Um, in this presentation, on accident, if you see the word zoning ordinance, it's actually a general code of, um, in the ordinance.
Thanks, Sarah. Um. So for the, uh, uh, evaluation and criteria for, um, consideration. Um, the, uh, no evidence related to topography has been presented, um, as far as, um, evidence presenting or establishing a, uh, topographic characteristic. Of the property not caused by the applicant exists, um, thereby creating unusual undue circumstance. Um, the applicant has supplied statements relating to the building on the subject site being too small for the, um, to house the, uh, commercial vehicle. Um, but no evidence related to physical conditions of the property itself. Thus, uh, you know, if approved, uh, we don't see, um. The applicant would be permitted to park or store their commercial vehicle in the side yard of their residential property located in RM District. Um, now I will open up for comment.
If I may just add, um, you, you know, um, kind of continuing my last thought. Um, as I understand it, um, and certainly, um, Don or, or anyone in his team could, um, jump in if I'm misstating this. Um, the, uh, criteria that you are used to applying to variances in the zoning ordinance. Are not the same criteria that you would be using for this request. Um, as I mentioned earlier, this is a. Um, ordinance that's in the city's general code and that standard actually gives the zoning board, um, the authority to grant appeals. Um, it specifically says that the requirements of this article may be modified or varied by the zoning board of appeals. Provided evidence is presented establishing that because of topography or other physical conditions of the property not caused by the applicant. Enforcement of the provisions here under would create unusual or undue hardship. So, um, that's why the administrative facts that are in this review are a little bit different than. Um, those that you typically see when you're reviewing a zoning ordinance variant. Um, so, um, I, I hope that that's helpful.
All right, questions for the administration?
Chairman Stimek, uh, member Burley has this hand raised.
Thank you for, uh, being my eyes. Remember Burley?
Yes, uh, this is a question for administration. When you say the, uh, code is enclosed building, does that mean all sides?
Yes, I believe that that's the way that we're interpreting it. So, um, the, uh, a building is defined as something with a roof and in enclosure, I think, means all sides. Um, we'll look in the code right now, uh, as you're all discussing to see if there's any further, um, guidance on that.
Other questions for the administration?
The, uh, concrete pad that is called out there, is that? Has that been permitted?
Member Freena, um, Paul Urbil did research that question.
Um, that concrete from the, from the curb going all the way back was permitted in twenty fifteen by a previous homeowner. So a permit was granted, applied for and granted for that concrete, yes.
Other questions for the administration? There are no other questions. Is there anything that the applicant wishes to, uh, add to his or her application or to the administration's presentation of facts?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I'd like to add some things to the, uh, presentation. The height of my, uh, work vehicle is eighty-four and a half inches tall. I did submit that to the, uh. City. My opening of my garage door is eighty-three inches, so I am at a height. Of an inch and a half taller than would it be allowing me to park it inside the structure. Um, the vehicle would be on the side of the house on that concrete pad away from the front edge, behind the front edge of the house. That is it.
If I may, Chair Stimek, um, just so that the applicant, Mr. DePiero knows, um, we included all of your materials in the zoning board's packet, so they do have all the rest of your photographs and information.
Okay, I'm sorry. I just didn't, I didn't, on the screen.
Sure, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. DePiero, the, the eighty-four and a half inches on the height, is that to the ladder racks?
No, that would be just to the, that number is just from the factory, from GM specs for the height of the vehicle without the ladder rack. Uh, the ladder rack would put an additional foot and a half, so there would be no way the vehicle would fit in there.
All right, thank you. Other questions for the petitioner?
Yes, I do. Um, this is, uh, member Mark or member Burley, the petitioner. Um, where is your, it's a electrical company, I think, is the, you, who you work for?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, and where is their office or, uh, wherever their station is from?
No, my station, so my company works for Motor City Electric. They're based on, on Grinnell Street in Detroit. Uh, the, the, the reason why I have the van at the house, I am, uh, on call all the time for emergency, um. Emergency, uh, happenings at pump and water stations that I have to, that are critical, that I have to go to, you know, um. When stuff breaks down. Um, but my office is located in Detroit.
And how, how far is that from, how many miles approximately?
I, I would say it's probably, I don't know the mileage off the top of my head, but it's a thirty-minute ride.
Okay, and where, where, which, where are the cities? Are they specific cities that you do that for?
Well, my jurisdiction for my local is anywhere from up and the tip of the thumb in Michigan, all the way down to Down River and as far west as Ann Arbor. So I have a huge vicinity that I have to cover.
And thank you.
Uh, Mr. DePiero, um, you've indicated that the vehicle won't fit in your existing, uh, attached garage. Have you looked at the possibility of building a detached garage that, uh, you can house a vehicle in?
Um, I don't, uh, I've not looked into that, but I don't think with the a lot of allowance, I could put, uh, a structure in the back and or on the side that would allow it to fit in there and still be within the. Um, building rules of property line as close to the neighbor. I have not looked into that though. Uh, this is my first, uh, attempt of.
But there, there's also, there, there's a built-in pool in the backyard. Is that correct? Photos?
That is correct. So there's like a deck in the back and there's really no, there's really no place to put a garage in the back of the property at all.
All right, thank you. Any other questions for the petitioner?
Yes. Hi, Joseph. I'm Roseanne. Or Menendez, as they refer to me. Um, quick question. Do you have any plans in the future to change that vehicle?
Um, I can't, I'm not sure. The company, once the, once the van, once the fleet vehicles roll, I'm, I'm aware of a hundred thousand miles. They do issue new vehicles at that time. Um, I'm not sure what they would be issuing, uh, depending what fleet service they, they go with at, at that time. And I'm not sure, I'm at fifty thousand right now, so I'm not sure how long that would be.
Now, what about the width between the garage wall and the fence?
What, what about it?
How, how, how much width if you were to change out vehicles? Because what, we wouldn't.
So the width, um, the width between the fence posts and the garage is ninety-six inches. I can fit my van in there, the van in there quite comfortably and still get out. Um, it will fit, uh, any, anything larger than that. Like I have a, a Boy Scout trailer that I parked. a Boy Scout trailer that I park back there sometimes, that it's extra wide with the tires and it fits back there no problem. Um, so I don't think if they give, I don't think they'll give me anything larger than what's currently on the slide.
Okay, and do you plan to keep that commercial vehicle parked in that enclosure at all times?
On the side there or on the on the property?
Nope, I I in the enclosure, backed into the enclosure. In other words, you're not going to have that sitting out in your driveway and only put it in at night. I mean, if 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 they were, were to prove it, it would have to be kept in that enclosure and not out exposed.
That's, that's correct. I do move it out on the weekends to get my lawnmower to the backyard to do uh cutting. But it goes right back uh right away. Uh, it's kind of tucked in between the two houses and then obviously the privacy fence there uh kind of blocks the lettering. Um, when I don't have the uh scout trailer on the premises, the van goes back further. So it's even further back towards the back of the house, so you really can't really see it at all driving down the street.
And last question, so there's no gate on the front of that?
There's no gate.
No, okay, all righty, thank you so much. That's all I have.
Mr. Tumany, you had a question?
Yes. When you get an emergency call, are you the only one in the job when you get there?
Um, it goes through a call list. I am usually number two on the list, uh, if they can't get a hold of the first person. Uh, so usually on most emergency calls, they want a minimum of two people there. Uh, just for safety aspects, I'm an electrician, so we're going into these facilities that have possibly had um catastrophic events happening at these pump stations and with medium to high voltages. So for a safety standpoint, we usually have two people there.
Well, what I'm getting to is if you took the rack and the ladder out, it would clear the 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 header, right?
Uh, no, it wouldn't. The top, the height of the van's eighty-four and a half and that opening to my garage is eighty-three inches, so I'm an inch and a half too tall with the ladder rack removed.
Okay. All right.
Uh, Ms. Trucker, you you mentioned that this was um from a different ordinance. Uh, does that ordinance require public hearings? Did we do public notice on this request?
That's an interesting question. Um, we did do public notices, I think, um, out of, out of habit. Um, I I don't recall seeing that it references the noticing requirements that the zoning board follows, actually. Um, Paul, do you remember something differently?
Uh, no, I don't think that the traffic uh the the section of the ordinance does. Um, I I thought we had determined that it was an action of the board that requires notice similarly.
Got it. So I think, um, if anything, we're being conservative in.
But let me ask it a different way. Did our notices that we sent out say that there was going to be a public hearing?
I I believe they did, I am.
It's it's my intent on on allowing the public to speak, I just wanted to know if I officially have to or if uh I was doing it out of courtesy, but I appreciate that.
Um, and one, if you could just give me a second, I'm reading the public notice. Um, the the cases were noticed identically in the same document, so I believe, yes, we have, we advertised that there would be a public hearing.
Right, so so someone may be expecting that there would be a public hearing, and I appreciate that update. Are there any other questions for the petitioner?
If, yes, this Frank, if it's not approved, uh, what will you do?
Uh, I would have to go to my company and tell them that uh I'm no longer able to have my vehicle on site, which would probably cause me to lose my job. Cause I'm a I'm a pretty good uh big piece of the puzzle when it comes to these uh these shutdowns and uh emergency calls.
Okay. All right, any other questions? There are no other questions, this time I'll open up the public hearing um or open up the discussion to the public. Uh, this is appeal number twenty dash oh three regarding the property of three, four, eight, six, one Everline. Is there anyone in the public that wishes to be heard regarding this request?
I see no hands raised.
Did we receive any written correspondence to the public hearing notices?
We did not, Mr. Chair.
Once again, this is appeal number twenty dash oh three. Is there anyone in the public that wishes to be heard? Once again, I don't recognize anyone in the public that wishes to be heard regarding this request. I will close a public hearing, bring it back up to the board. Is there a motion?
I I have a question for Don before we go forward. Don, if we, if if this is acted unfavorably, this doesn't open us to allow guys to have semis sitting inside of their house and does it?
No, Mr. Farina, uh, nothing you do in any case opens us up to allow others to take advantage of um an exception to the ordinances. Um, but obviously, when one is granted, others may follow, you know, and um, I just think it's important to remember that there's a, there's a city council ordinance that is not zoning. It's it's regulatory on the books and they give you specific guidance on the only times that a a a variance should be granted. Um, it's it's a difficult standard and I think it's intentionally so. And and if you, if you grant one, others may follow with the same arguments. And it is, it is a challenge for you to navigate the line between hardship and policy.
Okay, thank you.
A question, do we have, do we have a definition on the ordinance's definition on enclosure?
Um, so, uh, Paul, uh, reviewed the ordinance and beyond a definition for building, which is something that includes a roof. There's not an additional definition for an enclosed building. Um, we were wondering, um, Chair Steinbeck, if you're aware of anything in the building code off the top of your head that um further, you know, refines the definition for um building being enclosed. And um also, member Burley has his hand raised.
Well, in in response to your question, so the the definition of a building from the building code is a roofed structure. Um, enclosed is not defined in the building code. Um, but I think the common definition would be that it would have at least three sides on it, if not four. So um a roof and at least three sides um to be an enclosed building would be my opinion on it. Member Burley?
Well, that's, that's what I was getting at, that if, for an example, if he put a gate on the fronts and a, even if it was uh one of those, and I don't know if you would call it a carport, um, that would be considered a roof, that that would um alleviate this request for a variance.
I I may have an additional thought on that. Um, which Paul could also um add to. So um, one thing we looked into was the um permitted flatwork. Um, going up to what we believe is basically the property line there where the um fences, I believe. And if you were, um, I I believe that uh that permit actually might have been issued in error um because the required side yard is meant to be free of pavement. Um, if there were a roof over that paved area, I think that it actually wouldn't meet the requirements of the setback. And that would give us, you know, there would be a permit that would have to go through the zoning review um in terms of putting a roof uh over that um paved area. And I I don't believe that it would be allowable per the setback requirements in the zoning ordinance. Paul, do you agree, um, based on what you reviewed?
It, yeah, I do agree. Um, and I guess that's with the assumption, not the certain knowledge that the property line is somewhere very close to that fence.
Right.
I would certainly agree that if the, if you did build a building there, it wouldn't comply with side yard setback requirements from the zoning ordinance, whether it was an attached or detached building. I think the minimum setback for a detached accessory building is at least three feet, if not six, I'd have to double check. But um certainly it wouldn't be as close there and there would be other building code issues that would come to bear fire separation and other things with that, so.
Chair Steinbeck.
I have one last.
To mentee, oh, I'm sorry, and.
Oh, I'm sorry, go go ahead, uh, Mr. Tumany, he was probably before me.
Is it possible we could ask him what size wheels he's got on it? He's got nineteen-inch wheels, and if he went to a seventeen, that would lower it a couple of inches and then he could clear it without the ladder rack. See, if he goes to the job site and there's somebody else there that has a ladder rack and rat and ladder on top, by lowering the, you know, the vehicle down, he can clear it and this would uh take care of the problem, in my view.
Maybe I can potentially ask it a different way, a a question for the petitioner, Mr. Perro. Um, do all of the fleet vehicles that your company operates have ladder racks on them?
Uh, yes, they do, and I need those ladders for my job sufficiently at all times. I cannot have, um, I I need those with me all the time. Different sized ones, I have different sized ladders for different things.
All right, thank you.
I have a question for um, Mr. Denault. Are you there? Oh, I can't see you.
Yes, yes.
Oh, quick question for you. So so the only thing that sets this vehicle apart from just having any regular van with with a ladder rail up on top is the fact that it has a company's logo on it. Is that, am I correct in assuming that?
Uh, not necessarily correct in assuming that, no. Uh, commercial vehicle is defined in a number of different ways. Uh, for purposes of our ordinance, um, let's see what we have here.
The way it's registered?
Yeah, they they could be registered to a company instead of a person. It could be uh equipped in a way that makes it commercial rather than strictly used for residential purposes, which I E, that would be the the ladder racks on top. Uh, it could be that um it's just a simple matter of use. It's a, it's a painter's van or, you know, it's something that is used for commercial reasons. Um, or a, um, I've seen catering vans that people try to keep in their driveways and there's an ordinance that prohibits that. So, you know, it's just, um, it's not just the logo, just removing a logo wouldn't necessarily change the character of the the truck itself.
Okay, thank you.
All right, I believe at this point in time, we have closed the public hearing. Uh, we brought it back up to the board. Uh, I guess I have one other question for uh administration. So as I understand the write-up, the only justification for granting an appeal to this section is topography? And can you give me any help? I- is there any additional information within the ordinance as to what topography conditions would be appropriate?
The only language is that which we excerpted um in the review on page two. Um, that's the only uh section that we found that was related to providing relief from this requirement. Um, I I don't believe, but I'm, you know, also very much, you know, curious as to um Mr. Denault's interpretation. I don't believe that other sections of the ordinance, I E., you know, the zoning ordinance um variance review standards could apply in this case since they weren't referenced in that specific section, unless I'm wrong.
If I could, could add or supplement that answer, I don't, I don't think you're wrong at all. Um, but I do want to clarify that it's not just topography. It's other physical conditions of the property not caused by the applicant.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so by way of example, but not necessarily the only examples. Um, let's say you owned a property that could not accommodate an enclosed uh building to put your vehicle into. Because if it's physical, you know, limitation, the way the property is designed, maybe it has a wetland on it or something. Uh, I I can't imagine a specific scenario, because you should be able to design your home on a residential parcel to make, you know, a garage work. But but that's the kind of thing envisioned here is that there's something about the property that will make an exception, that will allow for the board to make an exception uh in those cases where the property itself creates an unusual or undue hardship is the way that it's worded. So the expectation, of course, of city council is, we're not going to keep commercial vehicles lying around residential neighborhood. They they clutter it to make, they they create blight, they obstruct views, they obstruct sidewalks uh or sidewalk views. Um, that's the expectation, right? So um the expectation is countered by this exception that they created in the year two thousand, which is for properties that understandably aren't physically able to meet the standard that they've they've asked for. And what that looks like or or what they might have envisioned when they adopted that, I couldn't speak to. I've just tried to give you one example, um, of a property that might have the inability to create an enclosed uh building on it. Um, but I think the expectation is work stays at work and 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 home stays at home unless you can keep it concealed from the public.
So I know, I know this is a stretch, Don, but looking at this piece of property, um, he does not have the ability to put a garage on there that would house that vehicle.
Correct, that's correct, Mr. Farina, but that is not, that that I don't, I don't want to play both sides of the equation. I can play both sides and help you with either way, but um my answer to that would be that the garage has already been built and therefore it's already on the property.
Correct, so he, when he, I don't know what he was doing when he bought the house, but the house was there. And um they, I I guess. To to me, this is, this is kind of a gray area, because it's 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 a commercial vehicle, but it really isn't commercial in what I I view as commercial type vehicles, because I could go out and buy this vehicle and pull it into my driveway and not have an issue with it. That essentially true, right?
That is true until you add the ladders and the logo and you make it look commercial and you use it for commercial reasons like painting or, you know, other types of um commercial business uses. In other words, you bring your work to your home, you know, the expectation is that you enclose your work. You you keep it separated from the public view. Um, are there, and and again, the council recognized, there could be very limited exceptions to that, and that's why we're here tonight. But uh, that's the, that's the answer to that question, I believe.
Okay. Can I ask you a question of administration? Was this violation in response to a complaint?
I I believe that it was, yes.
Okay.
Um, or it was, um, I I believe, um, Commissioner Logan might be able to help me out here, but the um, I believe that there was a complaint about the um trailer. And upon inspection of the trailer, which is temporarily parked in front, it was noticed that the commercial vehicle was parked in a non-enclosed space.
Yes, it was.
Okay, thank you. We're looking for a motion at this point in time, gentlemen and ladies.
Fast question to the applicant?
You may, Mr. Burley.
Um, did he ever look at any local um off-site um places where he could park his vehicle? Did he ever look at any local off-site places where he could park his vehicle?
Like locally around in Frazier here?
Yes.
That would cause extra money out of my pocket and I don't have that kind of money to look for a storage yard to park my work vehicle that my company is allowing me to use. And the way, the position where it's parked, it's like off the street, off the sidewalk, not blocking anything. Between the houses, not causing blight. But no, I have not looked into storage facilities for the, for the vehicle and then locally at all.
Is a bus a commercial vehicle?
If you're asking legal, a bus would be a commercial vehicle if it's used for commerce, yes.
Then the city parks two buses at the community center is.
Those are not used for commercially. They, they are not used in a way that is for profit or that is engaging in commerce. They're designed to provide a city service.
Okay.
I'm looking at the history. Interestingly enough, I'm looking through the history of enforcement at this site. It appears commercial vehicles have been cited with the previous owners way back, two thousand five, two thousand six. I just find, I just found that interesting and thought I'd share that with the board. There are several enforcement vehicle commercial designations in B S and A indicating that there have been commercial vehicle complaints perhaps in the past of some sort. I can't look them up to see what they were, but that was years and years ago.
Mr. Denault, do we know if those, those vehicles were just left outside and they put that fence up to enclose it? Do we know that situation? I mean, I could see if it was out in the driveway exposed, but tucked back in. I mean, if that thing's backed in and you remove the, the ladders and stuff on top, you wouldn't even know that was a commercial vehicle. Do we have any history on if they were left out?
I don't and I don't, I don't know if the planners might know anything about those prior commercial vehicle violations that were enforced. Again, there's two, there's three of them in oh five, there's one in oh six, there's a parking concern in thirteen. There's a recreational vehicle concern in fourteen and, and in oh four. I mean, this, this site just seems to attract parking concerns. Two thousand sixteen, there were one, two, three parking concerns noted for enforcement. Zoning concern in seventeen. And then what we're here for today, which was the trailer and the commercial vehicle in twenty-one, but there's no way to.
And how long has he, how long has he owned this property? Do we know it was him?
November of twenty, so it was not him.
Okay, so, so i- if, if this were enclosed in the front and he removed the top ladders when he parked it in, we wouldn't, we wouldn't even know that van was there respectively, right? I mean, you would barely be able to see the top of it.
If you're asking.
So, from a blight standpoint.
Yeah, if you're asking legal, you'd have to be able to enclose it legally though and, and that would just, if you took the ladders off, it probably fit in the garage, I would imagine.
No, it doesn't. He says it won't.
Okay.
But, but to become an approvable enclosed building, which the standard requires, I don't think that it would pass through zoning or building approvals because of code requirements that we previously mentioned. Also, you know, there are, there are options on this site, if I may suggest, that would allow this vehicle to be in, in stored in an enclosed building. You know, the, the garage could be redesigned and rehabilitated such that, you know, the garage door were taller, for example. I mean, that's just one example. I also would posit that those earlier infractions, if you're, you know, just sort of thinking through the history on the site. I believe that Paul mentioned that the flatwork, that the paved area, that's the, you know, kind of where my cursor is right now. I think that was permitted in two thousand fifteen. So, those earlier infractions were before this area was paved. So, we may be able to assume that those enforcement actions were due to a vehicle being parked perhaps in front of the garage, for example. Yeah, or on the grass. I, I suppose, you know, that could have been in, an option, not an allowable option.
That's a good, a good observation, Sarah, and the only thing I would. And again, I don't mean this, this is nothing with, to do with the applicant. It just has to do with the site. That in two thousand sixteen, there were three parking concern enforcements listed in B S and A. For some reason or another, two thousand seventeen, it was a zoning. So, whatever these were, it's just something about this house. It's not the applicant's fault, those old ones. But I just wanted to point those out, that there's something about this location that there seemed to be quite, quite the enforcement action in the history of that site.
I believe, I believe those, those recent ones were a power wash company and the gentleman had a couple of different trucks that were parked in the street.
To the chair that petition has his hand raised, I just wanted to note that.
I did notice that. Mr. DePiero, did you have a comment that you wish to make?
Yeah, I do. Yeah, we moved, we moved into the house here in January. We bought it in November. The. The, the van on the side of the house, I mean, I need those ladders to do my job daily. There's something else I needed to say too. I think of here in a second. I'll raise my hand again. Sorry about that, board.
All right, we're still looking for a motion at this point in time. Is there a motion to be made?
Mr. DePiero has his, oh, it's gone now.
All right, I, I have to ask the, the potentially really dumb question. Can this vehicle be parked in the street?
Mr. Steinbach, it cannot. The same ordinance prohibits the parking or storage of any commercial vehicle or commercial equipment upon any public property.
Thank you very much.
Including but not limited to public streets, so it's pretty articulate.
I, I, I guess I just have to comment and maybe it's a symptom of the request. As I noted, Mr. DePiero used to be my rear yard neighbor. And the van used to be parked in his driveway in front of his house. In my subdivision of, I think there's eighty-nine, well, probably eighty-five houses that are within the interior of the subdivision. There's a couple out on a, on a secondary thoroughfare. There are probably no less than six commercial vehicles that park on residential property outside of a building, some in the street on a continuous basis. And they have not caused, in my opinion, a degradation of the neighborhood. There are no companies that, that bring semis to their house. There are no large box trucks, but vehicles of this nature of a van potentially with ladder racks and some writing on it. There are no less than three of them I can see from my window as I speak.
Well, then, I guess I will, for the, for the sake of bringing this to some kind of conclusion. I will make a motion that that we approve variance twenty dash oh three thirty-four eight sixty-one Everline Drive. To park a van, commercial van on a side yard setback behind, next to the dr- next to the garage behind the front face of the house. And the hardship being that he cannot add another, an additional garage to the house. And it would be a, in my, in my opinion detrimental to the and create a, an aesthetic home if they opened up that garage face bigger. And therefore, I believe that if, if he parks. I'm sorry. I, I need to complete my thought on the, the motion. That this, this would be the only location that he would be allowed to park that vehicle would be behind the front, front portion of the home between the privacy fence. And that's my motion, rambling as it was. And I'm sure Don can clean, clean that up.
There are second to the motion.
A second.
Was that Mr. Logan or Mr. Burley? I'm sorry.
Mr. Logan.
Yeah, motion by Farina, second by Logan to approve appeal twenty dash oh three with the information stated. Is there any discussion on the motion?
Mr. Steinbach or Mr. Chair, can we add that the privacy fence not be removed? I mean, does he even own that privacy fence? Because that's what it closes it. If that goes away.
That's a good question. That's a good point, Rosé.
I mean, I would prefer if he could just close the front off, then it's no more intrusive than a camper that is legally. The people are legally able to park in their yard. That's how many feet up in the air. I mean, if that's closed off in the front, you can't see it. It's closed behind that fence. It, it doesn't create any negative visual effect anymore than any other high-rise camper trailer that can be legally permitted on the side setback behind the front building.
I concur.
Ms. Menendez, are you proposing an amendment to the motion to require a gate or a fence in the front?
For, for me to vote yes on it. And if the motion maker prefers that. My main concern is not, is not having that side fence removed. Does he, is that within his control to keep it in place?
I, I, I understand, but that's two different questions. I, I, I believe Mr. Farina's motion was that the vehicle had to be parked behind the front line of the house between the privacy fence in the house, which would lead me to believe that the privacy fence needs to be there. But that's a different question than a condition that requires a gate across the front. I'm not suggesting, necessarily suggesting that. I'm just trying to clarify what your, your, the point of your discussion was.
It was a suggestion to do a better job of closing it. And it's up to the motion maker to decide if he wants to add that or not. That was just my.
You, you could make a motion to amend if you so desire.
Can, can we get a point of clarification before we go on to the, the, the applicant has his hand up and has had his hand up for quite some time.
Well, at this point in time, we're discussing a motion on the floor. He can answer a question specifically asked of him.
Yes, is that his privacy fence?
Yes, that is my privacy fence. It was put up by the previous owners.
Thank you.
And it's, that's not going anywhere.
Okay, thank you.
All right, other discussion on the motion. I would, the only other thing I would like to add to it that modifying the existing garage to allow for the interior parking would be somewhat difficult and I think put the, the looks of this house out of context with the rest of the houses in the neighborhood and wouldn't fit in well probably to a greater extent than the vehicle being parked on the side of the building where it is now. Is there any other discussion on the motion? Hearing none, Ms. Traxler.
Member Farina.
Yes.
Member Logan.
Yes.
Member Burley.
Yes.
Member Chmenti.
Yes.
Member Menendez. And Chair Steinbach.
Yes. The request has been approved. Mr. Perro, you have your approval. It is conditioned on the vehicle being parked behind the front line of the house and between the fence and the house. And if, if I understand correctly, it was based upon a ban of this type. If you get a significantly different vehicle assigned to you in the future, I would certainly investigate with the building department and enforcement officer before you brought that home with you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, board.
All right, moving on, on the agenda. Which I have to find again, excuse me.
Election of officers, new business.
Also, Chair Steinbach, would you prefer me to take down the presentation since there's no kind of details or supporting information? Or would you like it to remain up?
It can remain up. That'd be fine. Thank you, though. The next item on the agenda is new business election of officers. If I may, let me first ask, have all of the expiring terms of the members been addressed by city council with this time?
Yes, that's right. After your meeting in December, at which time you made recommendations for members Hunt and Logan, I believe were the two. It was dealt with and their reappointments were made at the December city council meeting.
Thank you very much. In accordance with the bylaws or rules of procedure, we need a motion for the office of chair.
I move to nominate Mark Steinbach for the office, for the chairman.
Mr. Chairman, Don Denault, just to be clear, we don't need a motion. That's a little bit cumbersome and complex for this type of action. We need a nomination and we need the nominee to accept. And then if there are other nominations, they would be voted upon as competing nominations. But if the nominee accepts and no other nominations are made, it's approved by acclamation. We move on to the next position.
All right, I nominate Mark Steinbach for chairman. The only chairman I've known.
Did you know Frank Sinatra? Anyway, I will accept. You know Frank Sinatra? Anyway, I will accept.
I was going to say, oh, chairman, my chairman.
Are there any other nominations for the office of chair? Hearing none, uh, do we do a, a single proclamation at the end or, uh? Just move on?
As the chairperson, play yourself the next chairperson and you move on.
I shall be the next chairperson and moving on, uh, the next, next office. Are there any nominations for the office of vice chair?
I nominate.
I'd like to nominate Frank Farina.
Frank Farina. I accept.
Are there any other nominations for the office of vice chair? Hearing none, uh, Mr. Farina, congratulations on, uh, maintaining your office of vice chair. Uh, moving on to the office of secretary.
I nominate, uh, Ms. Menendez.
Exactly.
I believe that was Mr. Logan that made that nomination. Is that correct?
Yes, it was.
I accept. Thank you, Mr. Logan.
Are there any other nominations for the office of, uh, secretary? Hearing none, uh, Ms. Menendez, congratulations on your, uh, position of secretary.
Thank you.
Should I ask for nominations for treasurer? No, never mind.
That's the one I want.
And it take all, take care of all our vast, uh, budget. Um, the next item on the agenda is unfinished business. Is there any unfinished business to be heard? Hearing none, um, planning commission liaison, Mr., um, Farina, I believe you are still, uh. Providing service to us.
Yes, sir. Uh, the planning commission met last night. It was a, I'm very excited to. To, uh, show you the product of, uh, the last year. It is the updated, uh. Master plan for the city of Fraser. Uh, we, we have voted to send that on to city council. Uh, for their potential approval and our comments back. Uh, we had a public hearing. There is one, one gentleman who called in about public hearing. With questions about, uh, one area of zoning. And, uh, it's, it's a. I've been, I was part of the last master plan that was never approved. And, uh, this is a great, great master plan and, uh. You know, Danielle and Paul and, uh, Sarah did a, a really nice job on this. So it's, um. It's, it's relevant to, it has a lot of pictures of Fraser in there and, um. I think it'll be. Get, if it's used properly, will lead a lot of the decisions and the decisions that everyone makes in the city from here on out. If anybody has any questions, I will answer those. If not, I will tell you that there was one site plan. On behalf of, uh, Tiffany Development Corporation on thirty-three, four, one, seven, Colly Road. For, for. Uh, proposed building addition and that was approved, um. Last night also, and that was the total actions of the board for that last night. And, uh. I want to thank, uh, Sarah. For her, uh, her help throughout this thing. It, it's not often that you, you, you get to look at somebody so much younger and say, you've been a great mentor. But you have. I appreciated, uh, how tenderly you have, uh, treated, uh. All of us, but especially me when I was, uh, so dumb in some areas. So thank you very much. Uh. Appreciate all you've done for us and I, I wish you the best of luck. So.
Thank you.
Mr. Farina, or, or maybe for Sarah, uh, the, the document that you forwarded on to city council, that is, uh, shall we say a draft? Version of the master plan?
Yes. It says draft on the front.
There's a little nuance actually. Um, so until it's adopted, it will say draft. Um, planning commission adopted it by resolution last night. There's a little bit of a, um. I would say interesting thing in the planning enabling act, uh, where the planning commission adopts it formally and then, um. A legislative body is allowed to, uh, kind of assert their authority, um, requesting that they also adopt it. In Fraser's case, we've actually kind of run, um, had discussions with O'Reilly, Rancilio on this. Um, though consult and assert their, um, right, we thought it would be. Um, desirable to ask them to also adopt it. Um, they had an earlier role in, uh, approving it for distribution, um, per the requirements of the enabling act. And we thought it would be appropriate to, um, kind of engender even more buy-in, um, from the legislative body, which of course is. Um, very intimately, uh, responsible for, I don't think that's the right word. Um, you know, ultimately certainly responsible for funding implementation of the master plan. So we just thought it, um, best, especially. Um, based on their kind of enthusiasm and support throughout the process to give them that, um, that option.
Thank, thank you. Um, is that document currently available through the website? Or could we get, I, I don't necessarily want printed copies of it to, and that expense, uh, gone through. But, um, is there a PDF version of it that we could have sent out and, and we could have copies of?
We can. Um, I know that the file was too large when Paul was sending it to planning commission or trying to last week. So the version on the website, Paul, is, um, is still there, correct?
Uh, yes, it's still the draft will be, um. There were, there were the typos that we took care of, uh, that will be posted tomorrow likely.
On the acknowledgements page. So, um, yeah.
Whenever one that's reasonably suitable for, for use is, is available. Even if you just send us the link, email it, the link where it is on the site so we can download it.
We will do that. And if anyone wants to read it tonight, uh, you, it is, you know, other than the acknowledgements page, it is. Yeah, that is the version that we're putting forth to.
It's really exciting reading.
Yeah, when, when you said, does anybody want to read it today, that, I think that's, uh, gonna happen. Anyway.
That was a planner job.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Farina. Um, next item on the agenda is public to be heard. Is there anyone in the public that wishes to be heard regarding, um, items before the zoning board appeals? Not seeing anyone, um, raise their hand to be heard on that. Uh, moving on to the next item is adjournment.
You know, um. We, in the planning commission, we go around and ask East Commissioner. If they have anything that they want to talk about. And I, I think that's a good application. I thought that we had voted, uh, in. My mistake, when, when I looked at the agenda tonight, I thought that was, we were handling that under public to be heard. So, um. You know, um. I, if it's o- okay with you, uh.
Did, did you have something to bring up, Mr. Farina?
Yeah, I, I do. And, uh, I don't know if all of you know this, but, uh, Sarah's leaving. And she's done a great job and a very ju- great job. Uh, she is the best planner I've ever had my, my, uh. It's been my pleasure to work with and, um. I'm, you know, I just wanted to put that on the record and thank her for, uh, you know. What she's done for the city and for us and, uh, to go forward. So, um. Have, that, that was the good portion and I, I'd like to talk. Bob, when you get home from Texas, could you give me a call? There are some. Things that I'd like to talk with you about, uh, and how to go about getting them fixed in the city. So.
Yep, not a problem. I'll be in the office Monday morning.
Okay.
It wasn't the commercial vehicles in my neighborhood that you wanted to talk to him about, was it?
No, it's the one on Hayes that, that's running a business out of a house.
Um, that is, that is under work right now, Frank.
Okay. But anyway, um. I, I think it's a good thing to go around and ask, ask all the commissioners what they, what they have to say. And for some reason, we just have never done it and. All the other commissions do it, so.
Do, if, if you want to add that to the agenda, then we can.
I would love to do that.
Okay, so, uh, and you want to do it after public to be heard?
Where, yeah, prior to leaving.
Okay, so, um, whoever is going to prepare the agenda next time. Can you, uh, add comments from the, um, board members? To, um, after public to be heard and before adjournment?
Yes, we will definitely do that.
All right, thank you. Uh, anyone else have any comments for this evening?
If I may, Chair Steinak, uh, um, I'm so sorry.
Go ahead.
No, you're, you're good.
Okay, great. So, um, I don't believe that, um, my letter has made it around to the, um, zoning board of appeals. So, um, Paul Urbil. I think tonight is actually his first meeting with you all. He's been representing, um, us with the city. Um, administering zoning, performing office hours and also repping the planning commission for the last, um, number of months. So. Um, you, you know, I've, I've been with you, I think, for only three meetings. And Paul's going to step into that role. Um, he's your, uh, project manager for planning and zoning and also mechanics. Uh, community manager or kind of the person who's responsible for all of our services, uh, to the city. So. Um, my replacement is Paul, still supported by, uh, Danielle and, um. I can send out that, um, letter, which also has his resume to the, um, members of the zoning board of appeals if that. Is something that you would think would be helpful, um, Chair Steinak or anyone else. Um, we can do that tomorrow.
Oh, certainly. Yes. If you, if you can, you mentioned, uh, earlier, uh, phone message that, uh, it bounced back and I.
Yes.
I didn't, uh, I received other emails from you as late as today, the reminder for tonight's meeting and so forth. So I'm not sure why the other one, uh.
Okay. Yeah, it might have been something about the attachment. So, um, I, I'll, if it bounces back again, we'll figure, we'll, we'll figure something out to get it in your hands. But, um, you'll be in great hands with Paul and I know that you'll all enjoy working with him. I think it's a nice synergy too, since he's someone who's sort of like in taking the applications and even, um. Doing the reviews that, uh, get to the point to realize that a variance is, is in fact necessary. So there's gonna be, I think, some neat, um, some neat synergies there. It's been a pleasure working with Fraser and I really appreciate all of the kind words and warmth that everyone has, um, had for me over, over the years.
Can, can we ask where you're going?
Oh, sure. So, um, I don't have another job lined up. I am hoping to make a, a career change. Um, into, um, the philanthropy field, um, working for a local foundation, regional foundation. Or, um, working for, uh, perhaps more regional, an, an institution with more regional, um, focus like. Um, a museum or, um, arts and culture or environment, um, or housing and community development entity. So kind of stepping away a little bit from the, uh, um, direct service of government. And if I'm not successful soon, um, I will be back in the planning field. So, never say never.
A very good, best of luck to you and your endeavors and, and welcome, Paul.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else, Roseanne? Are you, do you have your hand up for a reason?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank Sarah for her service and tell her it's been an absolute pleasure. Working with you and you've always been more than helpful. Um, we'll miss you. But we look forward to working with your predecessor and thank you so much for your service. It really was a pleasure.
Thank you so much.
All right. If there's no one else, the next item on the agenda is adjournment. Um, is there a? Motion to, do we need, we need a motion to adjourn? Is there a motion to adjourn?
I move. A second.
Second.
A motion by Farina, um, the second was Chmenti, was it?
Correct, yes.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed?
Do we have to do a roll call?
I, I think the amount of I's made to clear that there was a majority that said that they wanted to adjourn.
But Don says I want to go drink. Get out of here. Good night.
Good night all.
Good night. Thank you, everyone.
Good luck, Sarah.
Thank you so much, everyone.
All right. Congratulations, Sarah.
Thanks, Bob. I'll, I'll see you at city hall.
Yes, yes.
Uh, can, can you give me a call on my cellphone?
Sure.
Just a quick one.
Yep.
Thanks.